Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming this evening. Free Town Lakeville Regional School Committee, January 24th, 2024. It is six, a little after 6:30. Sorry for being a little bit late coming out of executive session. I apologize. We are in open session right now, coming in from executive session. So we can get right into it, but we'll start with number one, a roll call. Well, we don't need a roll call because we are in open session. So just a note, we do have Superintendent Strauss here with his administrative team, Ms. Terry Fleming, Ms. Deirdre Farrell-Welch, Ms. Ashley Boulay. At this point, I do have a question. Is anyone outside of Lake Cam recording the meeting this evening? How you doing, man? Thank you for coming. Appreciate you.
Where's she from?
And where are you from, Zach?
I'm from Massacre.
Massacre, great. Thank you so much for coming. All right. So with that being said, we can go right down to number three, which is a pledge of allegiance, and we can get right into it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Student presentation to the school committee. Ms. Lombardi, how are you?
I'm good. I was told to stand there.
Absolutely. That would be great. No worries. You're official now.
Okay. So what's been happening earlier this month? We had 155 students in DECA. They traveled to Hyannis for the overnight regional competition. Forty-six of those students received first, second, or third place and are going to states in Boston. And if you want to see the names of them, they're listed in the Laker newsletter that came out on January 12th. Some upcoming things that are coming up in the upcoming months. Next month, on February 16th, which is the day before the break, will be the Laker Choice Awards, which are pretty much just like senior superlatives, but it's a big presentation, kind of like an awards show. And then at the end of the month, on the 29th, Pontiac Regional High School is doing a showcase for the eighth grade, where they can come here and tour the school and check out the clubs and athletics that we have and meet with people who like are in charge of the clubs or like captains of the team and see what's so great about the high school. And then in March, we have a trip to Washington DC. It's four dates, four days, I think, from the second to the fifth. And we're going to go to places like big monuments or museums and hopefully the White House. And then things that have happened recently, just this week, on Tuesday, we started the new semester. So a lot of kids got their new electives and the guidance department is starting to prepare for class scholarships for the class of 2024. And the last thing is that our school resource officer, Officer Bartholomew, is having her law enforcement internship for 11th and 12th grade students.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. Any questions for Camille before we let her go?
Where'd you get into school? What have you heard so far?
Well, I've heard from five, I think, from UMass Dartmouth, CCSU, Clarkson, WPI, and I think some, some fifth one. And I just got an email before I came here from UMass Amherst, but I didn't open it yet, so I don't know. But we'll see. I'll know when I get home.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
They're lucky to have you. Great. Thank you for that, Camille. We appreciate you.
Have a good night.
You as well. You as well. Number five, superintendent's updates. We have an update on AES with Mr. Goodwin. And then Mr. Strauss has his report as well. Do you want Mr. Goodwin to go first?
Reverse that because Ms. Desert has her presentation in the ARHS students.
Yep. We're gonna move that. Yep.
Number four.
Oh.
Number four.
Got it. Understood. Okay.
Just called together, that's all.
Understood. Sorry about that. Thanks, Ashley.
We have a curriculum leader and teacher of social studies also planning the Washington DC trip, Laura Barnicot, who has dedicated herself, along with Mr. Dan Rutledge and the rest of the team, to this civics project. As you know, it is a graduation requirement. It's a social studies MCAS that finally came our way, and they really thrown themselves into it, and it's having such a great impact. So I'll let her talk a little bit about that.
Hi, I'm Laura Barnicot, and we started creating this civics action project a few years back, but this is the first year that we've really run it through and been able to do it for the entire junior class. So the civic action project was created with the purpose of having students create their own experience and being the ones who design their project, them being the ones who decide what individuals they're gonna speak to, how they're gonna communicate, how they're gonna get their, their problem solved that they come up with. So the state really gives us six ideas, six phases, and so then it's kind of up to the school to decide what they want to do with those six phases. So I had just put for you on the list, if you skip one more, that's fine. Yeah, so I just had put for you how we have kind of been running the project. So this is our first year running it all the way through. We did a pilot last year, which Austin is gonna talk about, but this is where we're kind of at, at the moment. So we have gone through phase one, which was when the students were working to identify who they were in their community, what values they had in their community. They talked about what they thought the assets were in their community and started to think about where they thought there were needs in their community. So we did that, it really only took one class period for the kids to do, but we dedicated the month of September to that so that it was kind of just an intro piece for them. Then they started in October to look at identifying more specifically like particular issues that they could, that they could tackle. So we really worked to push them in a direction where they were working locally. So whether it, most of the projects are, you know, school-based, specifically district-based, I don't think any of them have, we pushed, some of them started as statewide issues, but we kind of moved them towards more local issues. After they started identifying issues, then we had them move into groups. So they did those two parts individually, and then we had a big kickoff in November. We did an event. We had them all in the auditorium. We gathered them in the cafeteria. We fed them lots of sugary foods for breakfast, and we let them pick their groups. And so they did it kind of in two ways. Like a lot of them picked, you know, I'm gonna work with my friends, but then we also took their phase-two issues that they had come up with, and we posted them all around. And if they didn't have a place to go, they were supposed to kind of head towards their issues so that they could find other people that were kind of thinking about the same topics as them so they could form a group. And we successfully got every kid in the junior class into a group. And on December 21st, every single one of those groups submitted all of their research that they had done. They researched through five articles. They did surveys. They did interviews. They met with people in person. They sent emails. They made phone calls. One girl sat in my room, and she was on the phone with the chief of police talking about an intersection that she thought needed to be improved. Some of them met with Mrs. Desert. They have all kinds of really great ideas, and every group completed their research, which I think was a huge success. So now we're in phase four, which is they're building their plan. So now they've decided what their issue is. They've talked to experts about it. And so we have spent the last three weeks, and we still have a few more weeks to go, that we're meeting with every individual group and talking to them about their process and how things are going, asking their next steps. We've provided them with feedback on all their research. We've given them tips of, you know, new people to talk to, new directions to go in. Some of them have found kind of that they've been, they've been told, I don't think that's gonna work. So we've kind of formatted some, maybe like shrunken down some plans or taken a corner and gone in a different direction. So right now, they are planning, and then they're going to actually be working through their plans, February to April. So you may have already had conversations with some of these kids. They've been around. We were, you know, encouraging them to get in touch with the local people first, right? So if you see them, they're still out there. We've given them new names and new people to go out and communicate with. They're learning a lot about civic action, and they're finding that change is harder than they thought it was. They're also finding why barriers exist, you know, why we can't just start school 15 minutes later. Like they're actually getting the actual meaning behind why we can't do these things, and they're surprised by a lot of it. They're working on skills like communicating, having them call people, or actually interview adults. It's tough. They're planning. We're working on how to write questions that aren't leading and create unbiased, like presentation of material, making sure they're looking at every stakeholder, not just their opinion of things, making sure that other students feel the same way they do and that they're not just assuming everybody thinks like they do. So it's been really good so far. So keep a lookout for their projects that you'll see coming around February, March, April. I would imagine some of them are gonna ask to come here and share some of those things with you because that's the direction they're going in. Some of them are gonna write letters. Some of them will come and speak. I know they have a couple meetings with the boosters in the next month, trying to change some things with athletics. But we will showcase it all in June. So we'll have it available for all of you to see. They're gonna reflect on their process and their ideas, and we have some interesting ideas of how we're gonna put it out there for the community, but that's part of the project, is everybody's involved, and we want them to share it all with you. So we haven't finished this. This is new for us. We're working on it. Really, there's, knock on wood, like been fewer bumps than I would have thought. It's been pretty good. So with a whole huge group of kids. So Austin was gonna come and speak about his group's work that they did last year. So we finished, finished the plan in like April of last year, and after the APUS kids had taken their tests, Mr. Coet let us pilot this with his class. It's supposed to be a full-year thing, so they did kind of a shrunken version of it, but Austin's group chose a topic that was pretty meaningful, and his group had success. So he also shared this at our kickoff party. He got up on the stage and, you know, tried to encourage the juniors about what his group had been able to tackle, and hey, we actually can get changed. So now he's gonna share with you guys what he has come up with, so.
Hi, my name's Austin Pelletier, and like Ms. Barnicot said, I was in the APUS history class that piloted this program last year. So to start off, my group, two other members who couldn't be here today. We wanted to focus on something that you also brought up was the intersection. We thought that it created a lot of problems leaving with the parents, the buses, self-drivers, everything kind of mixed at that intersection, and it didn't mix particularly well. So we started off very broad with our idea, and with support of Superintendent Strauss and the rest of the administration here at Pontiacwood, we got a lot of support from them, and they really helped us develop our ideas in realistic ways. And I think another important thing that we learned from this, outside of communication, was also compromise. We understood not every goal can be met. We had to set more realistic goals for ourselves, and that goal of the intersection went from, I'm pretty sure, getting a traffic light, to getting a traffic officer, to just changing the time that seniors were able to leave school slightly earlier in order to help with traffic flow, because the juniors get their licenses at around like the midpoint of the year. So when the seniors leave, then the juniors leave, it helps streamline that, the leaving the school, which is extremely helpful, especially when seniors and juniors also have sports, so not everyone's leaving. And now, cut to this year, we implemented it. And granted, and I'll admit this, it was a little confusing at the beginning of the year, I feel like, for the change, which is understandable because it was a little different. But I've talked with Desert about it. We talked at a few lunches, and she said that overall, it's been a great success, and I hope around the time that we came up with the plan, which is around the end of the year, I wanna send out another survey, maybe to the new drivers and the senior drivers, and see how traffic flow has improved in the parking lot. So I can take any questions if you have any.
I just wanna comment, I remember Austin coming into class, and you were, absolutely, we need a light. That's it. That's the only thing I wanna hear. And so I'm really proud of you for, for the process, and I think Ms. Barnicot, it's exactly what you're talking about, is understanding it's not quite as simple as, I want a light, get me a light. Because that's almost the way the conversation was, and I was laughing, and to see where you've come to is wonderful. I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been really a great experience in hearing what they have already discovered so far and figuring out that this is a problem that we have to tackle, trying to problem-solve, and then going in a different direction, which is sometimes hard. They're kind of stuck on what they, like you said, like what they want to do. One group, you know, they, they had talked about changing the dirt bike riding laws in Massachusetts, and we have shrunken that down very much. Like they're big ideas that are great things that are really important to them, and we've been kind of able to shrink them into a spot where they really can make possible change and checking in on them later. And possibly, a couple groups have already talked about handing their projects down to another group next year so they can continue, because they know they can achieve what they want to achieve yet, but they can take that first step and pass it on to juniors and then be there. We call them influencers, the people that will help you along the way, get your, your job done, so.
For the committee, last year, you will remember that we had some students who spoke about fields, turf fields. That came from this class. They were in Austin's class, and they were having the same kinds of conversations. So this is a wonderful project, Ms. Barnicot. Wonderful.
Thank you.
I mean, I could speak on like that realistic idea thing. I think the best part of the project, to come out of the project, was the satisfaction of seeing these compromised ideas and being like, oh, we didn't consider the schedule changes that were gonna happen next year. What can we take from that to influence our ideas? And then when we found that solution to that problem, it was really satisfying for everyone in our group, especially looking back at it now, seeing it work out extremely well.
Yeah, they're pretty excited. I would say most groups actually feel pretty strongly about what they have proposed, and they wanna see it happen, so.
In fact, today, in the library, you offered an extra, like, time after school. It was at least 60 to 70 students from the junior class came here.
Yeah, and we had about 100 last month.
After school to work on that, which is great.
Giving them that time to get together too and to form a group, and it, even just one of the conversations, like a group text versus all of you sitting at the table. Like it's been really good building in those ways. So yeah, we've done two days that they've come. We were pretty full today. The last one, we had about 100 kids, because that was a harder assignment that they were working on. So we're trying to give them the space to get that stuff done too and, and support them, and the whole department really will come down and, and help out, even if they don't have juniors, so that's been nice too. Yeah.
I just wanna give a little backstory too. This has been about three, I think we're in year three with the state on this civics project, and I was thrilled with how much Ms. Barnicot and Mr. Rutledge embraced building this phenomenal civics project. And they're like, I said, let's showcase it. Last year, I wanted to showcase, because the state does a showcase every year. I'm like, no, 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 we're not ready. I'm like, oh, you are so far above and beyond where other districts are in the state. And so we waited, but I am happy that this year, we are looking to showcase at the state level, because they've just put a phenomenal project together, and I would love for, you know, us to have a group of students be able to attend and, and present what they've done. They're just passionate and energetic about their, about their causes, right? It's wonderful. So thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, Austin.
Thank you.
Austin, you're a senior this year, correct?
Correct, yeah.
What are we, what are we doing next year?
Well, college is the big thing. I've been accepted to a few, so gonna make my final decision eventually.
Well, good luck. They'll be lucky to have you for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. I believe that exhaust agenda item number four, going down, I think we can go down to number five now.
Actually, I'd like to just simply be, for fairness to those people who, who showed up, I'd like to bring Mr. Goodwin up for a student custodian presentation, because you have guests with you, correct?
Okay. Great. Yeah, we can absolutely take that out of order, for sure.
And thank you for the time to be able to bring this, bring this forward. We started this custodial intern program around April of 2021, and we found that we had a deficit in custodial staff, we had needs in the buildings, and how are we gonna take care of it? So we got together and collaborated. I'd started with Dr. Stocky when she was here and continued with Mrs. Desert, and we continue the program to this day. Right now, we have six custodial interns that we keep on the books with us, and the program provides first-job experiences for many who participate, providing students the opportunity to learn basic set of skills that will help them as they enter into the workforce, and increasing sense of pride that is gained from the work that they put into their school community to help provide a clean, safe environment for all to enjoy. They pick up classroom trash, they dust surfaces, they dry mop floors. They fill voids when we have custodials calling sick, and it really has been impactful. It's, you know, their, their work has really been a plus. And tonight, I've brought with me our district building lead custodians, Cheryl Chorongas, Choronganes, Kevin Staines, and Mr. Costa. They oversee these students in their buildings, and I've asked them, I figure I'd introduce them, Kevin says he doesn't wanna talk to you, but I know Cheryl's, Cheryl has a lot to offer, as well as she should. She, she puts in a great amount of time with the students. She oversees them, she listens to them, she takes care of a lot of things, and Kenny spends a great deal of time with the staff in his building as well. And then what we have with us is we have Cody Martin with us tonight. He was a student custodial intern who now works full-time for the district. He is a full-time second-shift custodian, and he works over at the middle school, and he'd like to let you know what the program has meant to him. So at this point, I would like to have Cheryl and Kenny and Kevin, if they'd like to come up and say something, and then we'll have Cody say what the program means to him. And if you have any questions when we're through with this, we'd be glad to answer anything for you guys.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you.
I don't even know where to begin, because these kids have been absolutely wonderful with helping us. Being short-staffed as we were, it was, things were just starting to fall by the wayside, and we didn't really see a way out. And once these kids came on board, it was incredible to see them take, take it all in and realize as they're cleaning, like, I can't believe kids make a mess like this. Like, who taught them this? Like, it was just kind of incredible to see the flip of it. They're cleaning the cafeteria going, these kids are swabs! And it's like, they were just like absolutely instrumental with helping us, and I would have been so lost without these kids in the beginning, because at the point when they started in high school, I was here by myself. And then I had all these kids come in, and they were absolutely wonderful, they, guiding them and working with them side-by-side with these kids, and even during the summer, these kids, blood, sweat, and tears. I would see them go home with bruises from moving furniture, and they'd be back the next morning, really killing it on a, on a day-to-day basis, that, um, I, yeah, I think it's the most incredible program. I had the pleasure of handing out diplomas to three of those first group of students, which was an amazing experience for me, and I'll always forever remember that. But, um, yeah, I think it's the best thing that's ever happened to this district. These kids are great, and I just hope it continues going forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
It's always nice coming prepared for a speech, but I didn't know less tonight, since I'm going on vacation tomorrow, so.
Good for you.
I don't know. We'll see what happens here. But the individual that we have here tonight is a very good worker, very talented in what he does, very respectful. All his work he does, I don't have to check it. He's pointing in the right direction, he does it. He's just a great, not a, only a great custodian, a great individual, and, you know, you don't see that too often, and, you know, I really appreciate him. And I have two other custodians, student unit custodians, very, very good too, and, you know, without the program, I don't know where we'd be, you know? So, you know, they, they do an excellent job, and, you know, we do appreciate them, and hopefully this continues with them. So with that said, and I'd like to take, thank my staff, all the custodians, Kevin, Cheryl, Greg, my principal. Yeah, he's, he's, he's great with me. You know, we have good communication together, and we work together very well. So everything's, it's perfect. What a year. It's been great, so. With that said, good night, and I'm going.
Hello, my name is Cody Martin. I am a custodian over at the middle school, second shift. When I was a sophomore in high school, I applied for the part-time custodial position, working after school from 2:30 to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. I never thought of working at a school as an option for a part-time job while I was in high school until it became available, and I decided to apply and interview for the job. It was a perfect fit for me because I was already at school, and my school ended, I was already here, and I could just stay after and just do my job. Applying for this job would be an opportunity that would change my life in many ways and had made me into the man I am today. This job has given me many opportunities to use machinery that I would not know how to use today. It has also taught me time management skills and organization and how to work as a team of other people. So if I did not have this opportunity to work the custodial after-school program, I would not have the skillset I have today to transition into a full-time custodian position that will no longer be a part-time job, but my career that I'll one day retire from. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. No questions, right? No need to ask anything? Thank you. Good job. Thank you, Cody.
So that's the program. We take the kids into the summer. We have six at this point. In the summer, we house probably 10 to 12 students. We make our way through the buildings. If it weren't for their young blood and their strong souls, it would be a very big challenge for us to get out there and do it. They move furniture at light speed, according to most of us. You know, we have to chase them every once in a while, keep them on track, but they really are a great group of kids, and I just really wanted to acknowledge them tonight. I have the opportunity to see other students come up. We see academics, we see athletics, we see all these things coming too, but we have this great group of students that are so impactful to our district, and I just wanted to acknowledge them tonight, and I thank you for your time to be able to do this for them. I'll answer any questions if you have any. If not, I will take my seat and say thank you.
Any questions, sir? This is a good one.
I don't have a question, but most mission statements on most schools' staff would provide a clean and safe environment, and I think that a lot of times, we take that for granted, and it's one of the most important things. So kudos to you and your team. I have often said, you could eat off this floor in some of the schools, so it's a great job, and we should recognize it more often.
Well, thank you for your kind words, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. That was awesome. Superintendent updates. Update on AES with Mr. Goodwin, don't you go far.
Stay there for a second, Greg. We'll bring you up. Mr. Martin, thank you. Well done. Very well done. When we talk about success for students for all, that's what we're talking about, so we're proud of you. That's tough to beat. So in front of you, you have an updated class size list. We are beginning negotiations for ASME. That will be starting very shortly. We, we've had a conversation with Scott Texera. We will be sitting at table. Cheryl, I believe you will be there? She can hear me. That will be starting soon. At our last school committee meeting, Brenna had brought up a point, a very valid point, about what are we doing in regard to the use of bathrooms? And for gender-fluid students, where were we going? What was the direction? Steve Owen had some questions. So I made the promise that, that we would start doing some research. Terry and I did some research. We put out in our listservs to assistant superintendents, to directors of curriculum, to superintendents, and it was about as quiet as I've ever heard. There's nothing out there. We found two districts in the state that There's nothing out there. We, we found two districts in the state that have done anything. It is not a school committee policy and I will, I will reiterate that. It's really a handbook policy um, that we will be looking at. So, using what, what I read, talking a little bit with our, our legal team, we started doing very rough drafts. Kalen was involved. We are nowhere near to finalize something. What I just wanted to say publicly was that we've been working on it. We think we're getting to a good place. It has to be fair for all parties. Um, there are very particular laws in place, but it doesn't mean that we can't ensure the safety of all students. So, I don't know if you want to add anything, Brenna?
If I'm being perfectly honest, I'd like to see it become something that we can talk about openly. I think a lot of people don't want to talk about it because they don't know enough about it or because we have created a system, excuse me, hold on, that's inappropriate. Um, where if someone talks about it and says something that's not necessarily appropriate, they can lose their career, their entire life can be ruined, and I think it's inappropriate. So, I just want it to be known that it's not, I'm not bringing this up to prioritize any students. I'm not bringing this up to be annoying because frankly, it's annoying and I'm tired of like how much conversation is around this. But girls and women are not being listened to. Other students are being put in danger. So, it's something that I feel like having something that's established, that's a clear and fair middle line, moves us past the issue.
Correct.
So, if we can't change the policy, which I still don't agree with, but it's, it is what it is, then a handbook is the way to go.
Yeah, I think it's, we're, we're talking, um, two different things. So, so,
I got you. I got it.
The policy itself that had been talked about previously
Is the state.
Has nothing to do with this.
Right.
This is a separate, all, all my statement was is that, um, something to do with who is able to utilize bathrooms and where
Right.
Is a handbook, school-based, rather than a school committee-driven policy. That, that's all I meant, but I think we're on the same page.
Yes, I didn't mean it in a, uh,
Right, no.
Any antagon, I meant, just meant, if this is the way that we can do this, then that's the way that
That's a good thing. Yeah, and we will. So, um, Kalen, when do you have your, when do you do handbook?
Handbook is, I think it's in March.
Well, when you present it.
Oh, when we present it, it's June. June, sorry.
So, we will have something, we're probably going to have a rough draft far earlier than that. I'm thinking March or April. We will have something where we can begin to talk about it. And then get it finalized at, at that point. I just wanted everybody to know since it was brought up, what we have done since then. And that we didn't ignore it.
And it was, it was productive, I think.
Yeah, it was. Absolutely.
Great.
We had a wonderful meeting, Terry and I had a wonderful meeting, um, with deputy, deputy fire chief Grant, Chris Polanka from Lakeville, and members of the National Weather Service Emergency Management Team to discuss a number of topics, one of which included what happens during a weather emergency, especially for our staff who takes kids outside. So if you think about PE, if they're out in the middle of the field and there is a tornado that suddenly comes, we have to make sure that we're prepared, that we are preparing our students, we are preparing our teachers. So it was a, a very, very positive meeting. I, I appreciate it. And what also came out of that is the National Weather Service is willing to come into school, to do some workshops, to work, um, with any students, you know, not only just classes, but any students who are very interested in meteorology. This is another opportunity for our students to start to see some things live in action, which I think is always a, a real positive. So, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that's great. Uh, the opportunities for collaboration with them was so exciting. And I spoke with Justin Glenn here at the high school about his class and having some of those partnerships start. Just building those community connections and relationships is a priority and this was a, a great inlet for us.
So that's exciting. May 10th, 8:00 AM or 8:30, 8:30 will be the next senior breakfast. So we're excited about that. I wanted to, two more things, one more thing before we get to, um, Greg and, and AES and the punch list and all of that. We all know about the water pipe issue that called, um, school early, only on campus. First of all, we have to thank Greg and his team. Uh, when he called me at a ridiculously early hour, um, saying we didn't have water pressure, we've gone through that a number of times. I, I, I felt like all the times when, you know, we put a Band-Aid on something and hope it just doesn't bleed out. Um, unfortunately, this is one of the times when it bled out. And it was pretty quick where we understood that there was no more water pressure and we couldn't run school. Um, of course, it wasn't a toilet in the library, it was by the second base side. Second base side? First base side. Um, so Mr. Cabusio is still swearing at me for digging up the field again, but, uh, kudos to your team. But I also want to give some kudos to Andrea's here, Andrea Fay. So we, we went from getting everybody in, serving breakfast like we do on campus, to an hour later, how can we do some grab and goes? Uh, for kids getting on buses and all of that. So you're, you're, and full lunches at Gray's. So, so your group was fantastic. Deirdre, um, your work was wonderful. We appreciate it, you know, in, in trying to, to help oversee. Ashley got heavily involved with special education bands, um, to make sure that just as they were getting home, it was time to come back. Uh, Ken Rizendi's in, in the bus company did a fantastic job. Get home, get to the garage, and now you're coming right back. And, and Terry, you know, overseeing it, um, with myself, of course Renee. So it was truly a team effort. There were some questions as to when are we making up the day? So I want to kind of talk about it for the public. I did have this conversation I met with the union. By law, we need to be in school 180 days. Technically, because we were in school, we took attendance. We were there until, um, all but 32 minutes of what would have been a half day. The state also needs us to ensure that we are in the building for 990 hours at, at the secondary level. We are going to make that, so that's not a problem. So for those parents who are worried that we're going to be out a day later just on campus, that's not true. Uh, we are set. Uh, we are okay. Had we not come in, because Greg told me at 5:00 AM we need to call off school, uh, we then would be making up the day. But in this case, Gray's actually got in a full half day. And the middle school and the high school were about 32 minutes short. Um, and we're okay. We're okay with that. So I just wanted everybody publicly to know. And appreciate all the administrators for all your quick turnarounds and quick changes. That was not an easy one. Um, and, and it was very smooth. I apologize again to the parents. It was last minute, but there was not much we could do. But it went very well.
Yeah, not ideal, but, but a team effort to, to kind of make the best of it. So thank you to your team and then obviously leadership, Greg, your team, everybody involved. Andrea, you as well. Thank you. Um, anything for
That's it on my end.
Superintendent Strauss?
Did this event trigger the need for a weather incident?
Is there what?
Yeah.
Did this event trigger the need for a weather incident policy?
No, actually it wasn't. It's, it's something we need to talk about. So there's something called REMS, which is Response to Emergency Management System Training, which is, you know, as we all know, it's ALICE training, it's all of emergency kind of things. Deputy Fire Chief Grant wrote a grant and asked if we wanted to be involved. We have been heavily involved with the work. I think, given the size of our campus of 137 open acres, you know, it's going to be great for coaches, a cross-country team is out there, soccer teams are out there. It, it's, you know, what happens if there is a tornado with our windows? There, there are things that we need to think about that we don't want to think about. AES, we may not have to worry about it because we have brand-new windows at AES, which is a great segue to you coming up here now. So do you want to talk at all about the punch list? Greg? And I want to thank Deirdre and, um, Greg and, and Principal Penalt for, for all of their work as well as town officials, for all of their work. Uh, we will be having an open house uh, once the punch list is finished for everybody in the town to be able to see AES.
Well, it's been a great, it's been a really, really good project. Uh, I've spoke before to you. I can't be more enthusiastic and excited with the end result, to be honest with you. It really is cool. Uh, and the teamwork that went into it, the collaboration with the town, uh, building inspector, fire chief, and, and all parties involved, it, it's really nice. We had a meeting today, actually. It worked out really well, uh, to come into this school committee with, uh, with the MSBA and the contractor. The project is winding down rather nicely. The architect, Greg Hill, just walked the, the whole project in, put a pretty decent punch list together of items that he felt needed some attention before he would give it his sign-off on it. And it goes from anything to, he doesn't like the way the door footments are, uh, to the way things are cocked, right down to the finishes inside the building. Painting around the door jambs, the window sills, final cleaning. Uh, he's being very critical about it and he made that point clear today that he wasn't going to accept it until it was done and he re-inspected it. I've been in contact with Nate Dallin and I've talked to him about closing the project out. And Nate said that he would like to walk the building himself. He wants to inspect the doors, the way they operate, final operation on things in the building and to make sure that things are safe as well as Chief O'Brien, life and safety things and so on. But overall, I think we were very fortunate for this project. I think it's gone well and I think that we were, that we were fortunate enough to be able to have this done. The building looks phenomenal. Uh, it seems to be operating nicely. We've still got a few things to get there. We got to finish our intercom systems and the vestibules and our panic buttons to open the doors. We've got some security, uh, contacts on doors that are being finished up as we speak, some tie-ins with alarm companies. So all in all, it's going well. Uh, it's looking good. And at the end of it, I think when everybody gets a chance to lay eyes on it, I think they'll be very pleased with the finished product. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Goodwin?
Did you say panic buttons to open the doors?
Well, push buttons inside the office, which, which
Oh, like the?
Yeah, it opens it. So if somebody comes in, they want to allow them in, like it's, the exterior door, they buzz in, "I'm here to pick up my child." They allow them in. And then the vestibule, we have them on the outside, but we have a second set of doors on the inside that are now lockable that weren't like that originally. So now they wait in the vestibule to be allowed into after they get clearance. They run their driver's licenses, they give them the tag. It lets them know that they're okay with their folk, their photo ID on it. Now they have another set of, of buttons to be able to allow people in. And that'll work. We're going to get some new alarm keypad. So we've got some really nice things coming that, and it helps us to put another set of eyes on the building. The building's getting a little bit of love, as we like to say it these days. You know, sometimes out of sight, out of mind. Now we're over there and we're seeing the new finishes and we're like, oh geez, that could use a little attention. I feel kind of bad, you know, let's fix this up. Yeah, so now it's getting, you know, it's getting a new look. So things are going well. But like I said, any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
No, just thank you as always, Greg.
All right, Greg.
Thank you. Awesome. All great updates. Agenda item number six, acceptance of minutes for 12:06:23. At this point of the meeting, ladies and gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 12:06:23. I have a motion by Mr. Clark. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Burke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, is anyone abstaining? Perfect. All right, moving along, other presentations to the school committee. Um, up now is food service update, program update with Ms. Fay. Yep, yep, yep.
Hi, I'm Andrea Fay. Those, I know most everybody, but those that I don't, hi. I'm the food service director. I've been here for almost 11 years now, actually, um, in July. So, we'll start with just a few program highlights. As I'm sure everybody knows, breakfast and lunch continues to be free for all students. And as of September of 2023, it is permanently free for all students. So, the, we get funding from the state of Massachusetts, not the federal government. So, in Massachusetts, which is one of only eight states to make school breakfast and lunch universally free, we still submit our claims based on students' eligibility. And for every student that is a paid student, we get, sorry, I should have this. We, we get 53 cents from the federal government and the Massachusetts State National School, sorry. DESI makes up the difference between that 53 cents and what a free reimbursement is, which is $4.38. So we're still claiming all of our meals by eligibility. So students, um, we're still running direct certification lists to get free and reduced students. We're still encouraging families to fill out applications. As of this year, we only received 15 applications for a total of 28 students. So, most of our free and reduced, um, eligibilities have been identified through direct certification. Um, we are at 21% free, 3% reduced, and 76% denied or paid students. So, on there, you can see the differences between the reimbursements for last year and this year. So we're actually getting less this year, um, in reimbursements because there was a, um, additional 40 cents per lunch that we got through the Keep Kids Fed Act that expired in July. Additionally, DESI has authorized supply chain assistance funding for this year, but that was just about two weeks ago, so we don't know how much we're getting yet and we don't, and there has been no payments made. We have had a few shortages and supply chain issues. For the most part, it's just been produce. Um, specifically lettuce. We've had a hard time getting in lettuce that's been, you know, quality-serveable, so we end up serving a lot of it back. So, I mean, sending a lot of it back. So if students come home and say, "There was no salad today and there was supposed to be salad," that's probably why. So when we get everything in, it gets inspected before it gets, um, accepted. And a lot of times we've ended up having to send it back. There's been weather issues in California, so that's where most of it's come from. But other than that, supply chain has been pretty good this year, like cereal a little bit and some other breakfast items. But for the most part, all of our, we're getting what we're ordering. So, this year, as far as employees go, we've been able to add an additional three-hour employee to the middle school. They're, to assistance serving and, and prep. They're serving an average of 524 lunches a day among six people, so they need the extra set of hands over there. Um, we've had one employee retire in the past year, but she continues to work as a sub for us. So she didn't, she didn't go anywhere. She's still around. Um, we had our breakfast with the senior center on, that returned in December of 2023. And as, as Mr. Strauss mentioned, we're having it again in May of 2024. And additionally, the continuation of universal free meals gives us the opportunity to replace any aging equipment that we have. Um, and we can add equipment that will help us serve a large amount of meals that we're serving these days. Highest priority amongst those is a walk-in cooler at Asswam's that was just currently non-operable. Um, and then just some lovely equipment needed and we wanted a wish list for the kitchen. Um, some new display coolers at the high school, um, and warmers everywhere, pretty much. Our, our equipment is older, um, and in some cases oft-repaired. So, we have a walk-in freezer at, um, at Freetown that we've repaired a number of times. So it might make sense to eventually replace the compressor condenser unit. It's a big, a big-ticket item, so, um, makes sense to eventually get to all that stuff. Next slide is monthly participation for lunch at each school. So as of December, we're serving a total of 1,700 meals per day, or 66% of the average daily attendance. Um, next one is breakfast participation at each school. Breakfast is now served at all five schools. We started at the middle school and the high school in October. And we've gone up ever since we started. And we have some financials through December of 2023. It's, previous year was only 70 days through the end of December and this year was 71. And if you notice the, so if you look at the direct And if you notice the, so if you look at the direct costs, which is the second to last line, there is a 5% increase in total spending. That's because of the way Aramark changed a classification of, on their invoices. So now, so previously, paper goods, the foam, the styrofoam trays, the bowls, forks, knives, napkins, things like that. Previously, they were captured in food costs, and now they're being captured in direct costs, which actually makes more sense. So $30,000, $30,977.56 that was previously in food costs is now being captured in direct costs. So overall, food cost is up 3.6% this year, which is pretty standard when you look at inflation. And last is just some pictures, perhaps, of our first breakfast with the senior center. Ms. Blum serving coffee, and Mr. Clark, and Mr. Owen, also barfing the meal as well.
I like this blinding, all of that.
I had that one or a conversation, I like that one better.
Any questions, comments for Ms. Faye? I do have an ask for you, real quick. First off, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. I feel sometimes you get your kudos when you come in front of the school committee, but I think every other day, I think you probably are behind the scenes just doing what you do, and we really appreciate you keeping our kids fed.
Thank you.
We are going into budget season, and that slide of the equipment needs is pretty daunting to me.
It is.
So what would help us be able to advocate for you is potentially taking that list and maybe prioritizing in the greatest area of need for us. I feel like that's something that Steve Owen would ask for if he was here. So I'm learning. But yeah, if you could do that for us and get that to Superintendent Strauss.
Sure, and the school lunch fund is a separate self-revolving fund. But I can, I can get that with all estimates and stuff like that, too.
That'd be great, yeah. Anything would be a help for us to be able to advocate for you and the budget, so.
Perfect.
I appreciate that. Anything else? John?
First, thank you again. I see overall about a 66% participation rate. That seems to me like a pretty good number.
It is. Previously before, oh, sorry.
No, go right ahead.
I was gonna say, before universal free lunch, we were at about 30% at the elementary schools and 20% at the middle school and high school.
You answered my question?
Oh, sorry. I jumped ahead on that one.
Thank you.
I got one comment. Where it says breakfast with the senior centers, you don't have to be active in the senior center to come to breakfast. It's just a senior citizen's breakfast, and all they have to do is contact the senior center or you, and they're welcome to come. So it's not limited to active members of the senior centers. Maybe we'll get even more people there, which I hope.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Agenda item B, Pontiac Regional High School's School Improvement Plan and Program of Studies Update with Ms. Dessert. Hello.
Thank you, and I apologize that I was ill and not able to do this in December.
No, that's okay.
So the school improvement plan. So it was written at that time. You do have that there in the blue, in the matching slides. So we have three SMART goals, and our first one is about inclusive practices and programming to support all learners and tracking that through increase in MCAS performance. So this year, we were thrilled to be able to offer four integrated classes with our regular ed students and our life skills. That's three more than we had in the past. They're going very well. We just started a new, you know, movement in fitness, the maintenance and repair, and music art we have had in the past. We, by next year, we will have three AP classes, hopefully, for grade 10, so offering up more of that. We're very proud of our TNT program. So we have more than 56 students who are not on an IEP through special ed services, but are supported by teachers throughout their day, every day, as their person to teach them skills, to track their work, to look at their grading. And we have seen a high percentage of them performing better than they have before. Some of them staying at that, and about four students out of there that were still struggling to meet that. At that point, we call in, you know, our BBST meetings, and then we talk about whether special ed testing is needed, but trying to hit in tier two and three interventions. We have created more student voice this year. For the first time, we have an equity team. We've had three meetings. We plan to invite Lisa Markland back for our next meeting, or the meeting after that. She did presentations for us to the whole school. We have a roundtable and our Laker leaders. So trying to have more inclusive practices, have everybody's voice there. So always look in ways to do that. And when you do look at MCAS, well, you can see below our honor roll scores. This was first term. We just, second term is just ending now. We have increased our honor roll in all of our classes this past year. That's a nice indicator. And on MCAS, those other ones there, you can see that in, from 2022 to 2023, we have increased by 1% those meeting and exceeding in ELA, by 5% in math. The science has gone down a little bit, 3% in overall. But if you notice, they've been able to move from 7% at the exceeding rate to 16% at the exceeding rate. We find biology to especially be a challenge. It's a discreet science, and they're working very hard. They're, the teachers in the biology department have adopted gizmos. That would be a nice thing to share sometime. And also, their own goals are to look at the testing and to work on instructional strategies in each one of those units to make sure that they're teaching that to the best of their ability. We also have MCAS tutoring in English, math, and in biology. On the second one, the ARHS SMART goal number two, that one is about building academic engagement, authentic learning experiences, inquiry-based, that kind of thing. Last year, we created a think tank so that during our common planning time, myself, Jeff Galant, and a teacher, actually, it was Laura Barticote, ran a think tank, and all students, I'm sorry, all teachers signed up for two of those over time, and they went through classes on engagement and student choice, retake and revisions, which has been a big movement for us, and skill building for today's students. We brought back the field trips, the guest speakers. We put more courses in there, robotics two, engineering three, some things like that. This year, I'm pretty proud of the fact that we've gone from think tanks to doing a book study once a month for two hours. So maybe they don't love that it's two hours, but they get a little break in the middle there, in which we're working on cognitive engagement and building up from understanding and application, all the way to creation to the top thinking that we can, and applying it to their teaching. We are also using faculty modeling, where teachers are getting up and showing some of their practices in their room. We have increased certainly field trips and speakers, many more speakers coming in. And we've had, now it's three clubs since I wrote this, debate, programming, and Vex Robotics. So that's, you know, trying to give them more opportunities like that. For the coming year, we would, we are proposing in our program of studies, which is next, AP Seminar, which is, will be open to grade 10, and four other new classes. So continuing to find different things that students, that would appeal to students. So on the last page is a drier one, but an important one, about absenteeism and the state. All schools in the state are dealing with that, and we're doing pretty well, I think, in that. We could only predict, we could only project at this point. But we've moved from 21-22, and of course, those, we sent many students home. It was a hybrid year, and there was plenty of social distancing. But we had 21% for excessive, and that is 10 and under. 22 to 23 is 15%, and our projection right now, we're at about 10%. Chronic from 12%, 5% to 4%. And that can be a struggle, there's many different reasons for having some chronic absenteeism. But we're back to sending the letters as part of Chapter 222 in Massachusetts, having family meetings, bringing them in to talk about that kind of thing, and trying to have interventions to prevent dropout. So that's where we are this year, at this point, on the school improvement plan.
Great.
I can add a couple of things. Thank you, Kailin. One of the questions that, in my conversations with students, was what kinds of courses would you like? For those who don't know, we have not had many AP courses for sophomores. We are one of the few districts, we had none, which sets our students back, provides very little opportunity for them to get, for those who want an eight, nine, 10 AP classes. So for 24-25, there'll be three. AP Bio, AP Computer Science.
Seminar and AP Computer Science started this year.
So AP Seminar, just so you all know, is the first part of an AP Capstone Diploma program. So the college board offers programs starting in grade 10 in which students who are looking to build their portfolio, it's really good for small schools that have tight frameworks and schedules and don't have 50, 60 teachers. AP Seminar is really learning how to process, research, define what issues are, but it is not subject-based. So you could love science, you could love history, does not make any difference. You could love physics. So you have to, at the end of the year, just as you would in AP, any AP class, you put together an AP portfolio, in this case, and it gets scored by the AP. If you receive a three or higher, you can then look to take Part II, which is AP Research, where you then hone in on something you're interested in. So similar to what Laura was talking about, for the civics project, you could do a science project, you could do physics, you could do social studies. If you again receive a three or higher, you then get the distinction, which is rare in the United States, of being an AP Capstone Diploma graduate. So not only, not only you graduate as an honor society or anything else, and as a ARHS student, you graduate, and it's on your, it's your permanent record as an AP scholar, which is unusual. I know Boston and Austin behind me probably wished they had it a couple of years ago. And it's certainly an advantage for our students. We're excited about it. I've seen it work where I've been previously. It's an absolutely phenomenal program. And there are no prerequisites, which is what I love. So any student, regardless of GPA, can get into it, which is wonderful.
In addition to that AP Capstone that we'll be working towards, our students have the ability to have a bilingual distinction on their diploma as well.
Seal of.
Seal of biliteracy. So I carry us right in to the next one, where I just, I put the goals again, but if you go down to the middle of the page, the course additions and adjustments. Adding into our art program, there was a great push for ceramics. We have students who take mixed media and work with tile and mosaics and jewelry and all sorts of things. Ceramics is their next. Put AP Seminar here, and yes, that will be open to grade 10. And in fact, we talked about which department this should be in, and as, you know, talking with Mrs. Fleming and Mr. Strauss, you know, encouraging that we have multiple teachers teaching AP, but the first person who's going to be trained to teach that is in fact Laura Barticote, who is very much primed to have that definite view, as you can hear. A math elective, analysis and applications of sports statistics, so for a semester. Now, I have to highlight that this past year, for the first time, we didn't run journalism, we ran ARHS Sports Center. Little do they know they're doing journalism. And it's been so popular, so, so popular. Our students are doing podcasts and blogs and going to games, and they've just had the greatest time. They've been, you know, TD Garden, Tom Corrigan came in and talked to us. So it's great to put a little bit of that sports in there to tease them through some statistics. So as always, we're culling what we offer based on enrollment. You know, we are looking very closely at those, but offering some new things that would give some authentic experiences. In that same vein, the history department really wanted a history elective. And some of our students, look, over there, like Austin, he practically cried, wants a history elective, where they have sociology and psychology and criminal law and great things that have great enrollment. They wanted history. So it's the history of the atomic bomb and nuclear energy. If you could see Austin's face over there. And you can audit it from college. So trying that out, you know, to see if students are interested. Very excited about this next one with the success of the ARHS Sports Center. This is kind of a Part Two, what's trending, the art of digital content creation. So that one, I'm sorry, it was left off of that. But that is kind of a continuation that we thought was important, and feedback from those students who are in ARHS Sports Centers, saying, I want to do this again, is kind of a way for them to do that. And it really hits that authentic piece of it. In terms of some adjustments, Model United Nations started on Tuesday, and next year, we'll make sure it has that honors as well as CP designation. Some of our departments have CP and honors level in there. Students choose that level, and we're going to more and more of that over time. AP Biology will, for the first time, be open to grade nine. And Robotics and Marketing will be open to grade nine. So we're trying to eliminate prereqs. It used to be business as a marketing prereq and engineering as a robotics. Now a student can choose that pathway right away. And I'm very excited about that with robotics because they've been using the Lego sets and doing more STEM in the middle school, and now we have the Vex Robotics and the Vex Robotics team, and they can go directly into that if that's an interest of theirs, so. Some of the drops, you know, about enrollment, sad as some of us are. AP European History, you know, as we bring in other things instead. An independent music study because of the amount of music classes that we do offer. So that's what I propose. We propose, pardon me.
Thank you, Mrs. Dessert. Questions, comments?
I do think it's important to understand that adding classes doesn't necessarily mean adding teachers. So this is being done
Not asked.
In a fiduciary manner, but for always what's best for kids. And in this case, we don't have to ask for more teachers.
Great, thank you, Beth. Thank you, Mrs. Dessert. All right, so seeing no questions, we can roll on here to agenda item number eight, which would be public participation. What I would ask is if you are going to speak at public participation tonight, please come up to the microphone, please state your name, town, affiliation, and try to keep it under three minutes, please.
Hello, John Fisher from Arizona. I was a school teacher, mathematics, did about eight years of teaching and curriculum development. And I'm bringing today a curriculum development for situation awareness, which is not a textbook-y type of thing. It's more of a hands-on experience. So schools would not necessarily welcome something like that. But it can be done, I think. In the proposal that I passed out, it starts out with an image of traffic, they call it traffic fatalities in the Department of Transportation. And the CDC keeps track of injuries, where the non-fatal, the non-fatal injuries, well, that's the best kind. And the figures are growing every year. And it's, a lot of it is because people have a narrow field of vision. They're not aware of the things around them. So situational awareness training would be possible in a school, and I'll tell you a little bit about it, because this is a short presentation. But the, if you read over this, the whole curriculum can be done in three pages. It costs practically nothing. You have to buy a few thousand index cards. You can get this, 100 of them at Walmart for 73 cents. So, and the students, volunteers can do a lot of the work. And if you have someone do the statistics off of the index cards, you could do a study, statistical study, of how the students would grasp the concept and perform well in a new environment. So in, for instance, a situation. So, and for instance, situational awareness. A spy would enter this room and they'd see there's only one exit. And they'd check everything for normal. And we have a police officer, so there's a security thing. So your danger level is pretty low here. But that would be a quick summary from, like a Navy SEAL would be trained in all of this to be aware of what's happening. So a summary of the plan, well, I'd like to do the statistics first. Could I borrow your front page, just this front page? In the age group of 15 to 20-year-old drivers, you have in one year 5,570 fatalities. And of that, 2,110 are the drivers, the teen drivers, 15 to 20. So, and, but out of that 15,570 fatalities, there were 200,000 injuries costing $35 billion. So this is a lot of carnage from something that could be improved. There are other reasons for the crashes other than not noticing what's happening on the road. But if, if some kind of a training could be done to give the kids a chance to expand their horizons, to know what's happening around. So here's the crazy plan, okay? They come off the school bus and they go to their homeroom, right? So they're going through the hall. You have two volunteers from each homeroom, and they have the index cards there. And you've got a couple of volunteers who can be there before the school bus, right? And you put a suspicious object in the hallway, like along the baseboard or something, and they're supposed to notice their surroundings, right? So here's a bunch of junk that nobody would want to steal. That's the first thing. You wouldn't want to put like a $20 plastic mouse in here, because someone would take it home. And here's another suspicious object that would be just casually located. And then the students would, in order to gain points, they would write down their name and what the object looked like, and maybe the color. Very simple. And that's collected at homeroom and rubber-banded with a cover on what homeroom it is. And from that, they would know the grade level. And you get someone that's going for a PhD, and they could do a thesis on statistics. They could code all of that into a statistics application and then publish it, and you guys would be on the cover of Time Magazine. This would be a fantastic development for, so the, that's a summary of the plan. And I, I just had a lot of fun developing this. And if you read it over, maybe the principal of the school and the staff wouldn't be, you might need some teachers to supervise that when the volunteers have problems, they can straighten it out for them and make this thing run. And they could maybe do the, these are, these aren't suspicious objects. They're objects suspicious. And they're, you can go up the scale on situational awareness is to, the PTA has the best definition of it. I love it, it says, "To be mindful of your surroundings and be aware of anything abnormal." And then you, you get a feeling for where you're at, and everything is normal, everything's normal. Something abnormal happens, and now you have to decide if it'll affect you and what you're, how you will deal with it. Maybe start heading for the exit, which is a good plan. Or if you're driving a car and there's somebody weaving, there's a lot of abnormal when you're driving a car, right? You've got to slow down and watch and make sure you have a plan, rather than just, I'm just driving along and then I'll slam on the brakes and we won't hit him too hard. So the, the difference here is that the students walk in the building, they don't know if there will be that day anything to look for. So if they're going to gain points in this, they have to always be checking the environment for unusual, abnormal, suspicious things. And if they get in that habit, when they get to the driving stage, they'll at least be aware of what this is all about. And there's a USB stick here. It has the, a bunch of internet references that they can read, and there are links to videos that show situational awareness techniques. And some of them are kind of amazing. The one I like is the Take Home a SAP. SAP is Situational Awareness Program. And the kid gets his permission from his parents to ride shotgun, and he has to call out any abnormal things to practice, okay? The parents are encouraging this involvement, this engagement of the youngster, of brain to gain this awareness of everything. And there are several Take Home, Take Home a SAP listings in the, in the back of the
Yep. Thank you.
The USB.
Thank you so much for this. This is awesome. I appreciate it. We're going to have to cut it a little bit short. Usually we give our guests three minutes. We gave you a little bit longer than that. And I missed your name when you were coming up to the podium. What was your name again, sir?
I can't hear worth a darn.
Oh, I'm sorry. What is, I, I missed your name when you were coming up to the podium. What's your name?
John Fisher.
John, thank you so much for this. Is there an email where if someone is interested in implementing this in the schools?
It's in the folder on the documents in the USB.
Awesome.
I don't hear very well on the phone, so.
Email?
Email.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, John.
John, I'll tell you, if you want to see something abnormal, drive home behind Ms. Blum. She goes 100 miles an hour. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public participation? Great. Moving on, agenda item number nine, A, FY '24 Budget Update.
You have your summary of revenues. My apologies, I have January 19th, 2023, not 2024 as a header.
Oh, yeah.
This is as of January 19th, 2024. The first page is your revenues from the state as well as your assessments for operating and capital from the towns of Lakeville. And your last line item, as I keep talking to you about your interest income, we're seeing a rebound on some of that as well as Medicaid. We might be able to do something next year for FY '25 in your budgeting. Your expenses look good. We are mid-year. We're looking like we are having a relatively lack of snow winter. Knock on wood. So that's been relatively helpful to us as far as snow removal, operating heat and lights, et cetera. So there are no concerns at this particular point in time from an operational standpoint.
And Deirdre, just for the public too, can you speak to, and maybe Alan, can you just speak to where we're at as far as the budget process goes and where we currently are and how that's going?
Sure, I can jump right into my report. Should I dovetail to that?
Yeah, sure, why not?
Thank you. So as far as FY '25 development is concerned, as I reported to you last month, the revenue consensus number came in from the state, and it came in rather short. So that started out the state budget, the governor's budget from a conservative standpoint. Today she announced her $58.1 billion budget. It includes some local revenues for public education. And all of our associations now are de-looking at the entire budget to see what agencies are, what, what agencies are receiving what funding. We obviously are looking to MASs, MARs and our associations for Chapter 70, continued efforts for funding for Chapter 71, your regional transportation. We're understanding what circuit breaker might provide for us next year as well. We also have an opportunity to apply for extraordinary relief this year. Extraordinary relief is on top of that OSD increase of 14% that we got last year. So the state said that we will try to provide you with additional resources. The submission for the funding in the formula is a grid that you have to jump through all these hoops. We're going to jump through the hoops to see if we can get some additional funding for that. So the state budget's moving forward here at the local level. We, we're doing budget development differently this year. This year, the principals have gotten together in the same room, in the back of the room over here with the door shut and food. And we actually take the district as a whole and matriculate all the students from grade level to grade level, from building to building. And we staff FY '25 with the children, with their needs, from special education, PTO services, migrating them through the district. Then we take the staff and migrate the staff through the district and take a look at that as a whole. So principals are talking about their sending students. Principals are hearing about their receiving students. And we're hearing about the program offerings that maybe the elementary had, that we should be planning for grades or maybe planning for the middle school. So the principals are getting together to have those conversations. Meanwhile, operations are getting together. So we're putting similar groups together, if you will, for budget development. Operations include, you heard Andrea, Andrea, excuse me, Fay tonight. We've had Andrea, Greg, and Ryan at the table, because they're operations. And so Ryan's talking about technology and the need for technology drops. And Greg's right there, boy, that's electricity for the buildings, and I've got to do a project. Andrea will jump in, because she's got all these equipment needs, and we have school food funding for those equipment needs. So Greg needs to be involved in where are we going to drop equipment and what phased approach. So from a budget development perspective, operations folks are together for the first time. We brought in Jim Cappuccino. So Jim, we're coming to a budget meeting, and he was all excited. He had the budget meeting, he had all his folders. So we're talking about our athletic program and the offerings for athletics. He's doing the fixed asset inventory as far as where our needs are, just like we had Andrea present to you tonight. So the budget development is in full swing, and it is much different than it has been this year. It's much more participatory with the information, again, about sending and receiving students. And then we're putting groups together from an operational standpoint that need to piggyback on each other from electrical needs to technology drops to food service and equipment. The operationals folks are also doing surplus lists for any of our equipment needs that we all can surplus. You've got the barn with Greg and some things like that. Andrea's going to have some things surplusing. And so that's a part of budget development while you're cleaning the house too. So there's a lot of good stuff going on with respect to budget development.
Great, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Budget books next, at the next meeting, correct?
February 14th.
Yep.
I know, Will, you had asked about, the towns had asked for some, some documents.
Yep.
And I believe Friday.
So here's my second part of my report with respect to the meeting that Will, I, and Jack had after a follow-up FinCom. Is it a joint FinCom meeting?
Joint FinCom meeting between Free Town and Lakeville, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, great meeting.
And so Will and I followed up, and there was an email with some specific information that is going to be delivered to the towns on Friday. I've put it together, and Friday, Will, Steve, Jack, Deirdre, and Alan are meeting again. And they will review that, compile it, present it from a budget development standpoint, and then deliver it to both the town of Free Town, who has asked for it. But Gene Fox has also asked that the town of Lakeville also receive the same information that both towns are receiving. So they will have that all on Friday. Friday is the 26th. They asked for it by February 2nd. So we're trying to get that information to them as well.
Thank you, Deirdre, for that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you for that. I know, I know it was a pretty, it was a comprehensive list, and I think I voiced at the meeting that it's important to kind of be collaborative when, when we're moving forward, going into budget season. So I really appreciate you putting those together. I did reach out to them and let them know that there were some aspects on that list that, that school committee hasn't been privy to yet. So that information would not be sent until, obviously, school committee has their eyes on it. So I think they understood that. But we can, yeah, absolutely. I appreciate you getting that out in short order, for sure. That's great, thank you.
And the only other two things in my report are Assawaps at Elementary School that the superintendent and Greg reported out to you. And lastly, there's the master planning update with respect to the last conversations that we've been having with Habib, with respect to educational programming, enrollment historical projections, so that space needs can start to be talked about. And additionally, because we had the water issue last week, because you have your House Doctor, RFP, awarded to Habib and Associates, they can now incorporate this evaluation for that water break issue and make recommendations such as putting a holding tank on the other end, something like that. So I've had a quick conversation about maybe looking at that as well. So that's my full report to you.
Awesome, thank you so much. And I'm going to hide under the table when I, when I say this last piece. I forgot, as, as far as the next dual FinCom meeting between Free Town and Lakeville, I did offer up the school committee, the leadership team, to be there and answer any questions that they had, whether it be budget-related, whether it be policy-related, line item-related. I let them know that we would be more than happy to go and answer any questions that they would have and kind of move forward together. So, I'm sorry, but I promise if I'm in town.
Do we have a date for that?
Not yet. I hope we will get a date for that, and I hope we're invited. So waiting for that to come through.
Thank you.
Yep, but Deirdre, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, going back to nine B, English Language Learner Curriculum. This is a second reading, folks, and there is a vote required here.
In your packets, you will have pages that are a reminder of the two programs that we put forward. One is through SAVIS, it is ILET. And that bullet points are some of the highlights to the program that the vetting team looked at and identified for ILET. The next page is Hoot and Mifflin's English 3D, which also has bullet points for highlights. The team did recommend ILET. As explained in the bullet points there, it has an easy format. It is very accessible for both teachers and students, that has identifiable goals for the students, that makes the connections and emphasizes reading to comprehension and writing skills. The reading is a manageable portion with subheadings, which makes it easy for our EL students to read in sections and break down their comprehension with the, with the subheadings and broken-down material. It does keep the students engaged, focused, as much as they were unwilling to admit it. The students that did try it were complimenting on how it did engage them with current topics and areas that they were interested in. And then the content vocabulary is also seen in their everyday classes. So there was carryover to their ELA classes and to their science classes, because the content is day-to-day. Are you looking for the?
Nope, nope, thinking in my own head.
The cost comparison page that I did, I did spread out a little bit from our first reading per our quest from the school committee. It, I did break down the consumable and per classroom replacement costs. ILET, for total, the total for year one is $5,317.02. Engage 3D, or sorry, English 3D is $9,800 for the original cost due to additional hard copy materials and novels. And then the ongoing costs actually are higher, a little bit higher for ILET, being $1,791. That's based on 35 students with two replacement hard copy materials per year. I use the same formula. The, I thought I had written down, but it, it would take about, I'll do the calculation. It was a lot of years before the break-even point happened with the original outlay of costs, the difference of that $4,500 and the difference between the $101 a year, so. So I'll get that calculated. It was like 43 years. I don't think we're going to keep this for 43 years. So the additional cost per year is offset by the initial lesser cost for year one. So I am requesting that the school committee approve the purchase of ILET for our secondary ELL students. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Well, Terry, thank you for this and thank you for the presentation at our last meeting too. It was great. Really informative for sure and hopefully will be able to support our English Language Learners for sure here. At this point, I will entertain a motion to accept curriculum as presented, going with ILET at this point. So we'll entertain a motion there. Do I have a second, or do I have a motion, rather? Sorry. I have a motion from Mr. Clark. I have a second from Mr. Sylvia. Does this have to be a roll call vote? I believe it may have to be. So could we have that, please?
Will Stankowitz.
Yes.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
Jennifer Blom.
Yes.
Bob Clark.
Yes.
John Burke.
Yes.
Brenna Donnie.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Old business, C, Reed's Collaborative New Membership. I know this was brought up at our last meeting. We did not vote on it at that point because I think there were some questions. And I know there was a little bit of homework for you coming out of this meeting. So I'll pass it to you folks for an update there and then we can address as a group. And maybe, I think probably Ms. Boulay.
So you want me to start? So just as a reiteration for everybody, Reed's is looking to add two more districts, Brockton and Whitman Hansen. The concern from the school committee, if you remember, was where does that leave us? I will speak very openly that Ashley and I have very deep concerns in terms of, and we have a wonderful partnership with Reed's, but services are, there's been a struggle with services being met. And my primary concern as superintendent is our students. So I think that kind of explains my perspective. Ashley?
Yeah, and I'm part of the Reed Special Education Administration Committee. And we talked about it at our last meeting and I vocalized my concern openly with everyone to see what everybody else's thoughts were. The new executive director did jump in and share that the districts that were members prior to these two being added on would be priority districts. But I expressed my concern already with the keeping up of the clinic slots, the evaluations that we're facing using Reed's for evaluation purposes. And they did make it seem like in the conversation that most of the districts that have been presented with this are on board with approving it. And I did say that we tabled ours because of the concerns that we had. So like Alan had said, I continue to share concerns about adding it on. I'm not too sure if us voting no will make a difference because it does seem like they already have a large vote, yeah, a large majority toward approving it.
But I do think, from my perspective, to just simply say yes, just to say yes, doesn't express our concerns. I have expressed in the superintendent roundtable my concerns. There were a few superintendents who put it, are just acquiescing to what the majority is doing.
Right.
But I don't necessarily think that's the right way to go.
And it was interesting because when I brought it forth to everyone around the table and I was sharing concerns specifically about one of the public schools that is very large, everyone was nodding in agreement, but nobody was really saying anything.
Right, right. Yep. It's definitely a concern, for sure. So hearing that, I mean, I think us as a school committee and Superintendent Strauss hit the nail on the head. Our concern is definitely with our students. It's not that we don't want students all across the Commonwealth to be able to get the supports that they need. However, given that there have been some concerns regarding kind of getting evaluations done in a timely manner and things of that nature, I don't foresee, I don't know how adding two more districts is going to make that any better, right? So in my opinion, I agree with both of you. We can certainly make our voice heard as a committee here. But I'd open it up to the rest of the committee for discussion before we put it to a vote.
I mean, I don't know anything about this, but what happens if we vote no?
Well, there's not, I will say in the kindness and professionalism, Reed's does not hold us in retribution and will not punish us. So it doesn't hurt us. I just think, as a district, we need to make a decision as to what we feel is best for our students. I personally do not think it's going to make a difference in terms of whether or not they get in. I think there's enough votes. But my leadership belief is, we speak our truth.
Anybody else?
We won't get kicked out. Right?
Yeah, and if we're already struggling with services.
Well, that was the question. It's like, if we vote yes and let them in, are they bringing more funding that will clear up the issue with not having enough people? But if that's not the case, then I understand what you're saying.
There was nothing that I saw in writing, nothing that we discussed, that said yes to that. We're also, unfortunately for us, we're not comparing apples to apples because we're talking about very large districts with, all schools have significant needs. So they have significant needs that they would be utilizing. But more seats means less time.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So at this point, I would entertain a motion to allow admittance of two new districts, Brockton Public Schools, Whitman Hansen Regional Public School District, to Reed's Collaborative. Open, I'll entertain that motion. Do I have a second and a motion for further discussion?
You get a second for me to take a vote?
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, I have a second for Mr. Sylvia. Do I have, well, I have a motion for Mr. Sylvia. Do I have a second? A second from Ms. Blom, thank you. Any further discussion? I know we just talked about it, but, okay. At this point, this is probably going to have to be a roll call vote. All those in favor? Yeah, yep, yep.
Will Stankowitz?
No.
Steve Sylvia?
No.
Jennifer Blom?
No.
Bob Clark?
No.
John Burke?
No.
Brenna Donnie?
No.
Okay, so it was unanimous. We can let them know of our vote. If it changed, I don't think it's going to change anything, but. Great.
I will email them tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
9D, moving along. Gender neutral restroom discussion. This was discussed in Superintendent Strauss. We're good here. Brenna, anything to add that we may have missed?
Not really.
Okay, great, great, perfect. Going down to new business, out-of-state field trip for grays. There is a vote required here.
It's an out-of-state field trip. Dr. Sullivan is not here. For fifth grade students to visit the Providence Museum of Natural History and Planetarium to align with science curriculum, to explore space in the planetarium. I fully support this.
Motion approved.
I have a motion from Mr. Clark. Second from Mr. Sylvia. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstaining? Perfect. Approved. Going down to the director reports. Here we have Ms. Terri Fleming with the Director of Curriculum with her curriculum report.
In my report, I updated you on homeschool members. There was a slight increase over the holidays for requests. We have no changes in our English Language Learner numbers. I did give a quick summary of professional development that's upcoming and the ongoing implementation of curriculum, both SD Math and Amplify ELA. The report cards have not come out from the state yet, but that should be coming out to us soon. So that will probably show up on my February, middle of February, end of February report. I did give some numbers. It's always nice to see what's happening with the things that you approved. So Early Bird is one part of our new dyslexia screener. We actually used it for both our first grade and the kindergarteners. And it is accessible for pre-K students. And our pre-K teachers did give it to a portion of our pre-K students to see what kind of results we would see. They are diving into the data. We just had our meetings. So I gave just an overview of students that were above benchmark in the 21st to 40th quintile and the 1st to 20th quintile, which is areas that would have us target some specific learning in phonics and phonemic awareness through the program. Our grade K is not alarming, even though the number does look a little high, at 26% below the 40th quintile. But it's based on the delivery of instruction. So kindergarten, as they move farther into this year, they start to see exponential gains because of the delivery of instruction at this point. So we will look forward to that second benchmark that will be given and the interventions that will come out of that for the end of the year for our students and leading into next year as they become first graders. The piece of Early Bird that we are so thrilled about has continued to be highlighted. And I did put that across there, the breakdown. It's not just telling us phonemic and phonological awareness and oral language comprehension, but it does break it down into those six components and fluencies that is allowing our classroom teachers to really hone in on skills that students are needing more time on. So the small group instruction is definitely more targeted within the classroom as well as the use of our literacy specialist. And our newest high intervention literacy specialist is able to really target learning for our students with these results. So we are still very happy with the data as it comes out in these first couple assessments. So thank you for that. The civics pilot for MCAS is taking place with all of our eighth graders this spring. And we are part of the pilot group. And then I did just want to highlight quickly the grants that we have received. Those are on there. And the fact that we are applying for as many new grants as we possibly can. We're in the middle of applying for a MIA grant for staff wellness. That's going to be submitted by next week. The SD Math Grant for Grays is in the process of being submitted also by next Friday. And then I am pursuing a private grant that Mr. Strauss received word on, that we are working as a physical fitness team with the three physical fitness teachers in the complex here to get a fitness court that would be accessible for both staff and students.
Outside.
Outside, yep. So we just started that. I have a meeting on Friday, so I'm excited to meet with that company and see what the process is. I did want to alert everyone that with the state grants that are out, they do require what's called an LEA Need Index. And they are writing to pretty stiff competitions. The levels, they want 80, a number of 80 on our index. We are sitting at about 34 to 48, depending on what the categories are. Because we don't have high chronic absenteeism, because we don't have high low socioeconomic numbers in our community, we just aren't qualifying. So the last two grants that I pursued, we did not qualify for. So that was disappointing, but I will, we will continue to look for opportunities and get those in as much as possible.
Thank you. That was a great overview there. Awesome. Any questions for Ms. Fleming at this point? Okay. Last, but certainly not least, Ms. Boulay?
All right, so you can see in the report that I provided to you that I have recapped all of the buildings with specialized population numbers, evaluations, et cetera. On the first page of the report, you're going to see that the school spotlight was Aponiquet. I like to sort of follow suit with the theme that we have been doing last year and this year, where when the schools present, I spotlight the school in my report as well. So following Mr. Godun, Mrs. Dessert, and Mrs. Barnico in their presentation for Aponiquet students and their participation in programming at the high school, I have given a snapshot of what things look like at Aponiquet this year. So I've updated the numbers for special ed enrollment for grades nine through post-grad. So do remember, please, that at the high school, we do have our adult transitions program, which is our 18 to 22 students. So students who are eligible to return to school after they have graduated. We have a total enrollment of 101 students at this time, which is a 14.8 percentage, which is good. I do anticipate, looking ahead, as we're starting to jump into budget season, I'm obviously jumping into my predictions and trying to look for patterns, which I shared last year and a couple of months ago when Mr. Owen asked me about, you know, my predictions from last year, that it's really impossible to find patterns in special education because every single year is going to be different. I think the patterns that we're looking for, which Deirdre had touched upon, is populations of students and needs of students as they're moving across the grade levels and transitioning to different buildings. And that's been really helpful to kind of have the data that I have and put it out in front of all of us as a leadership team to look at. But next year, we are looking at a slight decline if we're following patterns that I have seen in the past. I'm looking at an overall enrollment next year, ARHS is about 90. And you can see that we have a pretty large 12th grade class graduating, 33 students, with only three returning to us in our 18 to 22 program. So we do have a pretty large eighth grade class coming up, 44. However, looking at, again, my patterns of students moving on from eighth grade to ninth grade to navigate different schools or withdrawing for whatever reason, we usually hover at about losing 20. So I'm anticipating, like I said, a total enrollment of about 90 next year. So obviously, as we go into budget season, we are looking at that. We do house a lot of programs at the high school, which is great. We have a social-emotional program, a personalized learning program, which is for our students who require support in a small group setting, but are graduation-bound. We have our online program, which has been great for our high-risk kids that may be at risk for dropout. And then we have our life skills programs. So I just captured a little bit of data from this school year. We've had five students move in this year with IEPs, two of which had returned from either the vocational or agricultural school. We've had eight move-outs, and that consists of withdrawals, transfers to other public schools, or enrollment in a virtual learning platform or homeschool. Two privately placed students that were responsible for one homeschool student. So just a quick snapshot at what ARHS is offering right now at this time. If we go on to page two, we can see again, our numbers at the elementary level are very concerning, specifically at Assawamset, which I talked about last month. So I'm not going to get into too many details. But like I said, as we're starting to look at patterns over the years, we have this big cohort of kids from third grade that are transitioning to fourth. And then we still have that fourth grade bubble that will be fifth grade. So grays is going to be pretty much, I hate to say this again, but it's like the word of the moment, but it's going to be our spotlight school next year, where our attention's going to be on because we have a very large population, not just of special ed students, but general ed students as well, moving through and how we're going to support that need as we move along into the new school year. Free Town Elementary, again, numbers have increased since our last meeting and I had vocalized that last month as well, that, you know, even though our numbers were small last November, by the time we got to June, they almost doubled at FES. And you can see that the trend is moving upwards. So right now, last year in January 23, we had 83 students, but 104 at the end of the year. Right now, we're at 75. And I do see with the number of referrals and, you know, incoming preschoolers that we probably will be at a much higher number come the end of the school year. FES is a pretty big place right now because it houses all of our students that have significant needs. We have three programs there and, for lack of better words, they are busting at the seams. And I kind of went through and I did a little bit of a comparison. But of those 75 special education students, 22 of those students are in a substantially separate classroom. And those are our kiddos with, you know, autism, any kind of cognitive delays at this point that are non-verbal and cannot access the general curriculum without support. So that's 29% of the FES population that's in sub-separate, which is pretty high. So we'll be talking a little bit about more about what that looks like moving into the new school year and any additional supports we might be looking at at FES. And then grays, obviously, that next page, I just, again, captured the numbers and the anticipated number of probably about 100 special education students next year, which is the highest it's been since at least I've been here. And looking at previous director reports, which I know may not have been as detailed prior to me coming on, but still capturing numbers and looking at SIMS data, you can see that the numbers next year at grays are see that the numbers next year at Grays are super concerning, which I've already said. And this again is that cohort of kids, right? This current third grade is that cohort of kids that were four or five during the COVID closure. So those are the key years for those foundational skills, the kindergarten and first grade, that they were out of school or hybrid with little access, I guess I dare say, because they weren't fully enrolled in school because of the closure. And so we are definitely seeing the impact of that. Just moving on to the next page, again, snapshot about a district's students. We currently have 35. I did leave that note and I've talked to Deirdre about that incoming residential student who is living in district currently, but we're not fiscally responsible for until July. And that is a huge residential placement cost that we'll be taking on. And a look at evaluations, which again, I can answer any questions. I have some other data that I've dug up just in case you asked about where we are in the process with evaluations, how many we've completed, how many have been eligible. But I guess I can throw it out to all of you if you have any questions about anything in my report and I can do my best to answer those questions now.
I want to add, first of all, great job as always, Ashley, but I just want the committee to know that when we're talking about the student that is going to be on our roll starting in July, we're talking in excess of $250,000?
Uh, 350.
Per year?
Yeah, residential.
Their residential cost is $350,000 a year.
A single student?
Yes.
Your circuit, I'm sorry, Alan. Your circuit breaker doesn't kick in until the following year because circuit breaker is a reimbursable program. So your revenue will come in the following year, but budget has to be 100% for the year. So that's another way, how are we going to bridge and sustain the fiscal year bridging that we've been talking about doing?
Yeah, it's definitely going to be.
It's going to be different.
What grade is the student? Middle school, so we have a few years.
And there are a couple of other things that are, you know, going on too, that could impact potentially the budget, but that we're working on behind the scenes as well.
But I thought it was important that everybody here, when we talk about out of district placement, that it's not necessarily a $25,000 cost. It's.
Or necessarily students that we place, we inherit them too.
Correct. If they move into our district, then we're responsible.
Yep, of course, of course.
So we had a question?
I do, and I'm not sure it's necessarily for you, but thank you as always for the detail. But given the spotlight of focus on Grays and the numbers going up, would it be possible for the next meeting for the general class size update to get some class averages at Grays and the middle school?
Sure.
We actually have all of that, but yes, we can make.
Yeah, we actually were working on that, but yes.
We can take that up in a sheet for you guys.
It just might be good with budget discussions.
I agree.
Thank you.
Yep, that would be great. Anything else from Ms. Boulay at this point? I just want to rehash a conversation we had very, very vividly, right? Five, six years ago when our E&amp;D was down to $78,000 and we were all kind of clamoring with not knowing what to do if a catastrophe happened, right? And the end result of that E&amp;D kind of getting dwindled down was exactly what we're talking about now, out of district special ed and just the volatility of it, right? Remember very, very vividly sitting in front of the towns and the town saying, hey, if things come up, well, you need to come back and talk to us, make sure that you do so. So I just want to throw that out there as well as we go into budget season, so for what it's worth. Great, we're done with director's reports. We can fly into subcommittee updates. Regional Finance Committee, Steve is not here for an update. Ms. Blom, anything there?
He wasn't here for the last one.
Okay. And I think I reported out regarding kind of the joint finance committee between Freetown and Lakeville. I think there's a lot of work there to build kind of a very strong working relationship and collaborating.
I'm meeting with Bob Noon. Deirdre and I are meeting with Bob Noon's, the new town manager, next week.
Yep.
We invited Deb Petty. It's really not going to be on Bob's numbers, it's really meeting Bob.
Yep.
Because we haven't met him yet.
Another thing that I did say at the joint finance committee meeting was I encouraged them, pleaded with them, begged them to come in, sit with you folks, go through the budget, dive into the weeds, ask you any questions that they have. Because I think sometimes when you work in a silo, there are these narratives that spin up and these kind of preconceived kind of conceptions that might not necessarily be true, right? So I'm pleading with them to come in and talk to you. I know that you folks are going to collaborate back and I think that's the only way that we can kind of go into town meeting on some very solid footing, is if we work together. So my little pitch there. Superintendent Evaluation Committee, no updates there at this time. So moving down to the Wellness Health Committee. Brenna, any updates there? Alan, Brenna?
We're meeting on, in February, February 6.
Great, awesome. Cool. Policy Subcommittee?
No updates.
No updates at this time. Capital Committee, any updates that I'm not aware of from the group?
No, I'm actually going to be, Deirdre and I had a email conversation and I'm going to be reaching out to Habib as to what his next steps are.
Perfect, great.
Deirdre's so busy with budget, I want to.
Absolutely. Absolutely, okay. So Agenda Item 13, other business that may properly come before the meeting. We do have something that we need to take up tonight, which is good news. So we did have a successful kind of negotiation with Mr. Jack Higgins to be our successor Director of Finance. So we do have to vote his contract in open session. So at this point, I will make a motion to accept the contract of Mr. John Higgins to be our Director of Finance starting July 1, even though he's smack dab in the middle of it already. We appreciate that. So at this point, I will entertain a motion. So I have a motion from Jen, second from Mr. Sylvia. This does have to be a roll call vote.
Will Stankowitz?
Yes.
Steve Sylvia?
Yes.
Jen Blom?
Yes.
Bob Clark?
Yes.
John Burke?
Yes.
Brenna Donahue?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Voted unanimous, congratulations. You haven't, well, I'd say welcome, but you haven't left. Great, at this point, I will.
Can I add just one piece to that?
Absolutely, you may.
Ironically, I wrote in our Sunday message that life is, goes too quick and you have a job and then as Nick Saban had a job and he was replaced in 24 hours. This is not personal with Mr. Higgins, congratulations. We will be posting his position tomorrow. There is a committee of staff that we have already spoken with, who we asked for volunteers throughout the middle school. We do have an administrator, both Brian Olivera and then an administrator from the district who will be on it. We asked parents from the PTO or school council. They have come forward, so I just want everybody to know, we will be moving forward with that. It will be tough to replace you, but we're excited you're coming to Central.
Absolutely, great. So at this point, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So may I?
I'm going to give that one to Ms. Donahue. Motion was made, second to you, Mr. Sylvia. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, everybody.